Thank you for waiting, everybody. The City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, is meeting today in person on Thursday, October 12th at 6:12 PM for the purpose of discussing an order to approve the certified project application for 38 Norman Street, QOZBLLC, and to authorize a tax increment exemption agreement. This meeting is being held in City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Streets, Halem, Mass, on the second floor. If you are unable to join us here tonight, you may follow along, so long as the Zoom holds up on Zoom, by entering webinar ID 88116593691 and password 004026. Okay. With us in attendance tonight are all members of the Committee on Administration and Finance. I'm going to proceed while we try to figure that out. Because this is our primary meeting place, and we are not going to stop this meeting for that. So with us tonight are all members of the Committee on Administration and Finance, and joining us from the Committee of the Whole, Councilor Sillio and Councilor Proznowski. Okay. I think I will first of all invite, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to invite you up right away to sort of give us the overview of your project and kind of let us know what's going on and what brought you to us looking for this bit of assistance.
Hello, Ryan Whittig, 38 Norman Street, representing 38 Norman QOZBLLC. So just to refresh anyone's memory who wasn't involved in the discussions originally, we came under contract for this property towards the end of 2020 and began bringing it in front of the city in 2020. It was originally proposed to be a five-story, 25-unit building in our initial iterations. And through the community process and meetings with Historic Salem and the SRA, it was basically made clear that a five-story building was not going to be acceptable to the community and that if we wanted to move forward, we would need to bring it down to a four-story structure. At that turning point, we were basically ready to walk away from the project and just call it a day because we hadn't spent too much money on it at that point, and we could live with the lost money at that time and just call it a day. But Tom Daniel and Amanda Chiancola reached out to us and mentioned, hey, there's this program with the state called the Housing Development Incentive Program where there's funds available to support market rate housing development projects, and this could help make the project viable for you. And we looked into the project and we said, yes, it would make the project viable, but we would also need that money for the project to be viable. So with that being said, we'll move forward and we'll go through the process with the city, which we did. We went through all the various boards required for that, for our property to be approved: the SRA, the DRB, the Historic Board, the Planning Board. So there was, you know, four or five boards in there that we're all involved with and got it approved last year in April of 2022, at which point we were, you know, from the time that we had started, all of our designs and everything till when we were approved. As you all know, with COVID, the construction materials, our budget increased by 30%. So that alone was a huge, you know, struggle for us. And then, obviously, in 2022, interest rates started going through the roof, and here we are, you know, from now, interest rates are basically double where they were when we were starting the project. So truly, there's, all the elements are conspiring to make this not a viable project without the help of the Housing Development Incentive Program, which is where we're at now. So just to refresh everyone's memory, it's a 22-unit residential, all one-bedroom, two-bedroom units for rent. There's 10% affordable, so two units at 60% AMI. And then we also have a ground floor commercial space with publicly accessible outdoor space. So, and one final thing, just for another point of reference, the property is currently assessed at $778,000. So we are here requesting a tie, which is an exemption from the future assessed value of the property, not the currently assessed value of the property. So the exemption is on the completed value of the project, which, based on discussions with the assessor, would be anywhere between $4.5 and $6 million. So we're not asking for an exemption on the current value of the property, so the city's not losing anything that it currently has. You're basically agreeing to give something that would make this project, which would on its own, be not viable to anyone with normal, traditional economic, you know, metrics. So the city's not losing anything by granting this tie, it's only getting something by allowing this to move forward. That's it.
Thank you for that. If I may ask you just one more piece of detail, you mentioned the composition of the project, 22 units, mostly one and two bedrooms, 10% at 60% AMI. How did you arrive at that sort of 10% at 60% figure?
That was something that was discussed with the Planning Board, that would, they said in order for the Planning Board and for the various boards and City Council, all the people that we would need to get support from the city and various boards, that if we had, you know, at least that amount, that it would, it would, yes, it wasn't a requirement of the project, but it was something that, you know, we wanted to offer as a, basically a sign of goodwill to get all the support we could get from the various stakeholders.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Whittig? Councilor Watson felt.
Thanks, hi, Ryan. Just a quick clarification question. Our paperwork says that it's a 20-unit building with two, not 22.
20, yes, sorry. Yeah, did I, I don't know if I said 22, but yeah, 20 units, sorry.
So 18 market rate, two affordable. Thank you. Thanks, Chair. My next questions are for Amanda.
Any further questions for Mr. Whittig while he's at the microphone? Okay, thank you. Get up, see.
I was expecting more. Thank you.
You might come back. Since I've heard we have some questions headed in that direction, I'm going to invite our planner, Amanda Chiancola, if you don't mind joining us for a moment. Welcome.
Hello.
We had a chance to, you sent me some information earlier today, which I didn't have a chance to share with the other councilors, so it would be great to, just to bring everybody else into the conversation. I had a conversation with our finance director and with Amanda, requesting some information about some of the other ties that we've already agreed to. Amanda shared some information relative to some of the other tax increment financing we've approved specifically through HDIP, which hopefully we'll be able to discuss right now. And then also, I had had an interest in discussing some of the sort of general tax increment financing we've discussed that are not necessarily related to housing, recently approved offshore wind, et cetera, et cetera, trying to get a picture of how those revenues are starting to stack over time, since we have a fair number of rigs coming through. So I will ask you to dive into the first piece of that, which is the HDIP piece, which you said to me earlier.
Sure, thank you. So we have, the City Council has approved three ties since 2018. First one was in 2018. It was 65 Washington Street, the former district court, now the BRICS. That was approved for five years at 10%. That's the minimum for a tax increment exemption with the Housing Development Incentive Program to be eligible for those tax credits. The second one came in 2020. That's the former St. Joseph's Rectory and School Buildings at 129 Lafayette and Harbor Street. That was 10 years at 68%. The council approved that in 2020. For both of those projects I just mentioned, the year one, the term starts when they are occupied and have their certificate of occupancies, and so their year one was 2023. And those, again, one was 10 years, the other was five years. The former Council on Aging Building at 5 Broad Street was approved by the council in 2022, and that was the minimum of five years at 10%. That project has not started construction, is not occupied yet, and thus, the term has not started yet, but it will start once that building has our certificate of occupancies. And then there was, the Lee Fort Terrace Project was not done under Housing Development Incentive Program. The HDIP program requires that 80% of the units be market rate. And as you recall, in that project, it is an affordable project. And so that was done under the UCH-TIF program, but it's housing, so I just included it. That's a 15-year term. It starts at 100, and then it goes down over the 15-year term, and that has not started yet either.
Thank you. So just to, just to try to line these up in real time somewhat, both for 65 Washington and for 129 Lafayette, both of those are starting the year 23.
Fiscal year 23.
Fiscal year 23. So there's sort of a direct overlap that's going to happen in terms of the revenue reduction there. 5 Broad Street has not kicked in yet. Lee Fort has not kicked in yet because those projects have not gotten to occupancy. Is that correct?
They have not kicked in yet, correct.
Okay. Any questions about that information so far? Councilor Watson felt.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have an estimation on when that term will begin for 5 Broad?
It is when the building is completed. I do not have the estimate in front of me.
So just a further clarification question. Earlier in your comments, you said when they have the certificate of occupancy, but the first thing you said was when it was, when the building was full. So does there have to be residents in the building as well as, obviously, the certificate of occupancy prior to that, but then also fully filled up? Or does it begin with a certificate of occupancy?
The housing development credits start when the building is at 80% occupied. That means 80% leased or sold. I'll look to our assessor in terms of the tax exemption when that starts.
Chair, do you mind if Stephen comes up?
No, come on out, please.
Starts when the building is completed, determined by the billing department and certificate of occupancy.
Physical occupancy is not a matter?
No.
Thank you.
Lovely. And so for those two projects which have sort of hit the ground so far, based on the table that you provided to me, it looks like overall, in the next five to 10 years, they're not the same range, but over that five to 10 years, it'll be roughly $3 million of revenue that we could have been collecting, that we will not be collecting from these projects. And at some point in the future, when the other couple of projects come online, roughly another 3.5 million that we will not collect that we could have. This is probably not a question that's best aimed for you, but I am curious maybe for our finance director to hear sort of, is there a breakpoint at which it starts to become that the revenues that we could be collecting and starts to not become such a good idea to just let some of this revenue walk away? Go ahead. Yes, Amanda.
Is it okay if I just respond?
Yes.
In terms of the revenue not collected, I do want to note that with these former projects that were mentioned, they would likely not be feasible without the tax exemption. And I just wanted to make sure this is understood and under the exemption, it's based on the new value. And so the current value remains. You'll continue to get taxes on that base value. The exemption is a percentage of the new value of a project that otherwise would not, may not have been able to be built without this, so it's one of the levels that that.
Fair. Councilor Hatworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda, I'm not sure if you're able to speak on this or not, but the, when I look at the St. Joseph's and the Council on Aging Building, I think there was a clear benefit, public benefit on both of those buildings. St. Joseph's for the housing that it was going to provide and who it was being provided for, and then the Council on Aging, just in terms of the historic preservation of that building, and then what the sale of that meant to the future Council of Aging and where that went to. Are you able to speak at all on 65 Washington and what, because I don't think, a lot of us were not, actually, I think all of us in this room were not on the council at that time, what the public benefit of that project was and would the BRICS not, this is 65 is the BRICS, right, 65 Washington, would the BRICS not be feasible without that, without that 10% tie?
Sure. So the public benefit was, I mean, that was a tough site to develop. We knew that from the beginning. There were some contamination issues. We didn't project what the, had no idea what the value was going to be at the end of it. It was looking at what we expected the value to be, but the public benefit is we get new housing out of it, including affordable units. 10% of those units are affordable, and they're ownership units at 80% area median income. And to get ownership affordable units was a big win for the city at that site.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm struggling with is, like, I want to see this project completed. I think that that spot deserves something more active than is there right now. Love to see retail and housing on that location. I just struggle with what is, like, as a council, if we're giving this tie, what is the, what is the public benefit we're receiving back? And I don't know in the BRICS, like, I don't know if I was on, this is not to go back, but I don't know if I was on the council that time, I'm not sure that I would have supported that tie at that moment. I liked seeing the BRICS there, but I don't know that public money needed to be forfeited for that. And I feel the same on this one, so I'm sort of just looking for what is the public benefit that we're getting out of this, because everybody has to pay their taxes. Two units of affordable housing is 10%, which is inclusionary zoning, which is something that will be mandated, I think, at some point in the near future. So I'm just looking for what would be the public benefit that we would gain as a city from this.
Thank you, Councilor Hatworth. I think you really put your finger on the real issue here. I'm going to actually invite Mayor Pangalo to the podium to really speak to that, because I think that is an important issue to speak to. And I tend to agree, some of these other sites we're discussing, there's a real clear reason that we were invested in redeveloping those sites as sites.
Yeah, so just to be brief about it, I think we see the public benefit of HDIP in general and the tie that's available through, Councilor, sorry, I just realized that. That's available through the program is the creation of housing. So market rate housing, which is the goal of HDIP, but because of the Planning Board policy, we do get two units of affordable housing at this site. So exempting, the cost to the city is $40,000 in property taxes over the life of the tie agreement. So basically, a $40,000 public investment to create two units of affordable housing, plus the market rate housing that wouldn't be available without the benefit of both this agreement and then also the state programs that it will enable them to take advantage of. So we had historic preservation benefits for some of these projects. We had affordable housing goals. We also have market housing goals, and this is a tool that allows us to meet those needs. And just to emphasize a point that Amanda raised, you know, this is, this is not really $3 million that we're not taxing, because like, if a project is not possible without this as part of the pro forma, there are zero units. So it's, you know, any number times zero is zero. We're not collecting any property taxes off of 5 Broad Street, diminished property taxes off of existing private properties like this, zero property taxes off of the District Court Building. So it is really a substantial gain for a small investment on the city's part.
Thank you. Any further questions pending for members of the committee? Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McLean. So for my own clarity, the, it's valued at the assessed value, not the current value. So there is an increase in tax, the tax base we will be collecting on this project as opposed if it wasn't going to happen at all. Could I just have some clarity on that, that, you know, the point that it's, you know, the assessed value that the taxes will be based on, then we will be collecting more than we would without a project there? If I could just have a little clarity on that?
So the, yeah, the assessor puts a value on the property and then does the taxes based on that value. And the current, so we have a chart in your packet, and it shows you, based on the current value today, the tax revenue is about $19,000. With the new development, you'd get the $69,000 plus $7,900 each year with the new, based on the new value, the new assessed value. With the taxes exempted, it's $7,900, so about $8,000. The city's gaining $70,000 each year, plus keeping the current value. Does that answer the question?
Thank you, Chair McLean. Yes, so overall, it's an increase in revenue for the city.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, along with creating some housing, including two affordable units.
Yes.
Okay. Because of the challenges of having projects done at all without some kind of assistance with the HDIP and other options. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Watson felt.
Thank you, Chair. Amanda, I have a couple of questions about the restrictions that maybe correlate with the HDIP. So are the affordable units going to be deed restricted, and if so, for how long?
There'll be a 99-year deed restriction.
So even if 10 years down the line or something, the building were to flip and to be sold as individual condo units, those two units retained are not only under that 99-year lease for restricted affordability, but they also cannot be flipped and sold as condos?
They are local action units, and so they will be counted on our subsidized housing inventory. They are deed restricted for 99 years. Whether they can be sold as condos, it could happen. It's very, very challenging, because the units, you can't evict the tenants, so the units would have to be vacant without being evicted. And then the property owner would need to change their restriction to a deed rider rather than a regulatory agreement, and it needs to be approved by the city and the, I guess, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities requires changes to the deeds. It's a very long process, but it's not impossible.
What about restrictions on the rest of the building, the other 18 units? Anything that correlate there? They're just free and wide open for whatever the developer would choose to do down the line.
The remaining 18 units will be market rate. I do want to know if those two affordable units were turned into condos, they would still be deed restricted condos. They would be deed restricted at 60% area median income, and that requires actually a 10% window of affordability, so it'd be income eligible to households at 50% area median income, which is a great first-time homebuyer opportunities.
That's really helpful information. Thank you. I may have another one. Hold on a second. Sorry, I have to go back to my notes. Actually, the other question already has been answered tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Hatworth, I do just want to take a note, we're at 6:35. I realize I started the meeting late. My apologies again. I do want to try to wrap this up in the next couple of minutes because we have a next meeting pending. Just want to remind everybody, we do have some options here to either recommend approval, recommend not for approval, retain in committee as we see fit. Councilor Hatworth.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, I guess, address one more question that I have here or make one more point here. Is there something unique about this plot of land that makes it difficult to build on or makes it require this tie? Because we are, we're building things in the city. I mean, we're not building things, but others are building things in the city without this. Does it create a precedent? Like, what is to stop every development moving forward from saying, yes, we will, this will provide more tax revenue, this will provide more affordable housing, because we're going to require it at some point? This is providing more market rate housing. I still struggle with what is the, what is different about this project versus another project? Is there contamination on the site? Is there some reason why this developer or future developer can't build on this site that requires this exemption? Because it seems that we have, we're using the BRICS as sort of a loose precedent on this. With this, I feel like this is a pretty strong precedent to set in the future where every market rate development coming in is going to be asking for this.
I'll let the developer speak, but I do want to just note, this is a 20-unit project, which is a smaller project in terms of creating local action units. And we just went through an analysis with MAPC to look at this for an inclusionary housing and found that those small projects, the 20 units if you were, have a really tough time penciling out 60% area median income, 10% at 60%. And you'll see that coming up on a future agenda, but it's, the size of the project does impact it, and I'll leave it to the developer to answer the rest.
I mean, you hit the, you hit the main point there. I mean, when we came originally, the zoning permits for six stories, so it's not the site per se, that's the challenge. Although there is some leftover city infrastructure that's been like abandoned and neglected in terms of the sewer and that we're going to have to rectify. So there were some things that we found out as we were doing our due diligence for the permitting process that are going to be much higher than normal, but that's, that's on its own. But the challenge is zoning permits six stories. If we, if we had six stories, you wouldn't hear from us. If we had 30, you know, plus units, 20, at the time, 25 units worked, but when we went from 25 to 30 units, that just, it's an expensive building. It costs, we have an elevator, we went through multiple different boards, obviously, like I mentioned, where people had very informed opinions on what they wanted it to look like. They wanted it to look like a building that could fit very nicely in the back bay and south end. So you have, you know, a very nicely designed building that's in downtown Salem. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McLean. I'd like to make the point that I do remember the public meetings about this project a couple of years ago. I also gave a public comment at one of those meetings, and I do remember from the requests of the surrounding neighbors of wanting it smaller, that you did then redesign it. They wanted a different building. There were several redesigns, and I do remember the conversations of that upping the cost of it. And I was happy to see that, because of the feedback you got, that it was made smaller and it was, it was changed a couple of times. There was a lot of public comment. I was on more than one meeting about it. And so I am, I am in a position to vote in favor of this tonight.
Not seeing any further comment or question. I am looking for a motion. Councilor Watson felt.
Thanks, Chair. I do have one more question for Ryan before he sits. Don't sit.
Oh, you thought you were leaving. Come on back.
You were so close. Ryan, just so that we're really, really clear on what happens if this is voted against tonight.
Sure.
What happens for you in 38 Norman Street?
For me, for me personally, this isn't a, it's not a residential project anymore, if a project at all. Maybe we go back and look at other uses, like a hotel. Hotel's a totally different animal. We can generate a lot more revenue from a hotel than we can from, you know, rental housing. So maybe a hotel works here. Maybe we do something with the existing building and make the, we have, you know, we bought the, we bought the land for a reasonable price, so maybe we, maybe we turn that garage into, you know, a CrossFit studio. I don't know, a yoga studio. So maybe if that's what the city would like to see, then well, you know, we can, it can continue on as a parking lot with using the existing structure, what's there, or somebody else with different economics may view it differently. But for us, it's not a, it's not a viable 20-unit rental project without the tie and without the HDIP.
Thanks. And one last question. What is the timing of your state-level applications?
Sure, I might defer to my HDIP specialist, Bobby Matthews.
Sure.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, councilors. My name's Bobby Matthews, and I'm helping the project sort of navigate the HDIP process at the state level. As you know, I mean, the reason this came up when it did was because the HDIP program had sort of been on hold for two years. And really, the big draw for this program is the tax credit. What you see before you is a five-year tie. That's the minimal exposure that a city can provide, a gateway city can provide, to avail a project for state tax credits. And this is a project that is dependent And this is a project that is dependent upon, at least, I think Ryan said, over a million dollar, a million dollar state tax credit to sort of be viable. The program just got approved through the most recent tax cut bill that the governor and the legislature passed. So they actually expanded the H-Dip program from $10 million a year to now $30 million a year because there's a massive backlog. In all these other 25 communities, there are multiple projects that are moving forward because of this money. So this is really the only project after 5 Broad that is in the pipeline for Salem to avail itself of this state money. I would imagine that the, the application will go back online in another two or three weeks. And I would think that there are two stages to this application, but there's usually a preliminary application that requires approval at the state level. And then there's a conditional application. And once that conditional application is approved with a tax credit, the developer is allowed, is free to move forward with the construction, knowing that that money is itemized for a specific year.
Yeah.
More, I think it's going to be probably six months.
So you think you have about six months to get this approved?
I think you could get a state approval for an H-Dip tax credit within, in the next, yeah, probably six to eight months.
I, I think the question is what, is your timing specific to this project? Like, if this doesn't?
About that, I'm talking about the program itself.
Yeah, I'm talking.
They would not be allowed to, they would not be allowed to break ground until that conditional approval. So that conditional approval will not be for at least another six months. I would say six months is fair.
I, I think that the, embedded in my question for the councilors on the committee tonight, who need to decide and take an action on this, is if there is a desire from the body to leave it in committee for another few weeks, if we're feeling like that's what we need to do, would that completely mess up your timeline or not? I think that's really the question. And it sounds like you said probably coming online in three weeks. We're not really sure, so.
I think this project wants to be in line when they come out with the new, with the new rollout. The, the governor sat, signed, the legislature signed that tax cut bill a week ago. I'm waiting to get an email from, you know, Housing and Community Development to say, here it is, everybody, you're free to apply. If they do not have a tie in hand when they're, when that email comes out, they're not free to apply. And there are multiple projects in every single other gateway community that are going to be in line for that money.
Okay, I do want to, I want to close this conversation right around this point. I want to note that I see several hands in the room of people who would like to speak. I can also see our Senator Joan Lovely in the audience over Zoom, who has her hand raised and would like to speak. So it seems to me like there is more conversation that wants to be had about this subject. So I'm looking for a motion that's going to allow that to happen so that we can move to our next meeting. Okay, let's take the comments. Counselor Prozinski.
I just wanted to remind you that Senator Lovely had her hand raised, and I didn't know whether you realized that, that's all.
Thank you. Senator Lovely, I am going to allow you to speak. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Committee of the Whole and Administration and Finance Committee tonight. First, I just want to say that I'm honored to speak to you and, and grateful that I can do it virtually because I've been home convalescing from some surgery. I also want to say thank you to the Committee of the Whole, everyone, for your really thoughtful, in-depth questions tonight. I'm really proud to have sat in that chamber for 15 years and to listen to your questions brings back really fond memories of how important that we really understand what these projects do and why the, why this H-Dip funding is so important. So quickly, we all know that Salem is one of 26 gateway communities. And at, you know, since the end of last year, this H-Dip funding had run out. I represent two communities, Salem and Peabody, who are gateway cities. So I'm very much in favor of this H-Dip funding for the two communities to be able to spur development. Now, this is market rate housing, also with an affordable component, 10% for this project. And we know that H-Dip was funded at $10 million a year. We threw it through the $1 billion tax cut package that the legislature just sent to the governor, and she signed it. We put in a $57 million for 2023 to clear the backlog because there is so, so much popularity in our 26 gateway cities for this funding, this project included. And then $30 million annually thereafter. Worked really closely, I will tell you, with our lieutenant governor on this over the past many, many months, since January, to be able to push this. And the legislature, we finally got it done and got it to the governor. It's so very important to be able to spur development. And for a particular project like this, it's 20 units. The margins are so close in this, in this construction market, but it's, it's very difficult to, to meet it. And these are the types of projects that we want for difficult to reconstruct or renovate or, or, or enhance buildings in older communities like gateway cities. And we have an opportunity to be able to make something beautiful again and much more usable. We are creating housing. I hear and I understand, and we asked a lot of questions about what about low income and affordable housing? So the, the bill also included the LIHTC, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, and increased the annual program cap from $40 million to $60 million. So that also is the opportunity to be able to add more affordable housing to our housing stock that we know that we need. If this, you know, if the city declines this, these dollars are going to another gateway city. There's only 26. And I will tell you that in my colleagues in the Senate, everybody would like to have opportunity to, to have H-Dip dollars. Everyone said, well, why is it just gateway communities? Why can't it be our communities too? We, we need those dollars. But it's just 26 communities that have, can avail themselves of this, this funding. And it's critical for a project like this, other projects that will come along. 65 Washington, we know was very challenging. It got built. It's, it's really, you know, high-end housing, which is, which you need all levels of housing in a community. And this project fits in to what we're trying to do here in Salem. So I'm speaking in favor of this project, but in favor of H-Dip for the 26 gateway cities, Salem, Peabody in particular, that these dollars are available to be able to make these projects work. I also wanted to say thank you to Mayor Pangalo, who is here in the chamber tonight for his explanation and from his team. And thank you for the opportunity to address you. I know you have a tight timeline, you have a meeting starting in 10 minutes. So thanks, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, thank you, Senator Lovely. Not seeing any hands raised. I will say one thing that clicked for me in listening to the senators' comments and, and listening to the last comments from Ryan and Matthew is that approval of this tie allows them to essentially be at the starting line, ready to go, when they have the opportunity to put in this application for the H-Dip funding. But it sounds like it is not a guarantee that you will then be the recipients of this funding. It sounds like there's a number of people vying for this funding. It's about being ready when the time goes, if I'm understanding that correctly. Still looking for a motion or a comment. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Please, if you would like to make a comment, come on up.
I keep hearing, I came here for other purposes, but since I was here for this particular part of the meeting, my question is, what are you determining as affordable housing? Because I've seen the prices people paid at the brick. I know a few people who live there. Nowhere near what a clerk in this very building could ever afford. So what are you defining as affordable housing? Not to mention, I've sit in, in many meetings where the mayor and other council members are complaining about how much the city needs revenue, and you're discussing throwing away $3 million. Where they're literally wanting to tax small local businesses, yet for a large corporation who can obviously develop such properties, here, go ahead, don't give us $3 million. This is the issue I'm having right now.
Okay.
So what are you defining as affordable properties? Again, because I can tell you right now, if you took every city employee and had them apply for that, they're not affording it. And that's a city salary.
So, well.
And again, as I said, sit on, I've sat in on many meetings where this council, the mayor, and all of you complain to the local small businesses that you don't have enough revenue. Yet here you are, sitting, ready to vote on, here, big corporation, don't give us $3 million.
Okay, so to answer your questions, the definition of affordability in this case is 60% of the area median income is calculated by the state. I don't know what that number is currently. And for clarity's sake, the amount of tax revenue that we're talking about exempting for this particular project is about $8,000 that we're talking about in base value. The $3 million number that you heard me reference earlier was the combined value of all the H-Dip projects that have been approved since 2018. So if you put all of those together, it amounts to roughly $3 million in revenues, about two and a half.
But what you're asking from others isn't even near that amount. The local businesses here in Salem, especially the small mom and pops, they're getting affected as a matter of fact. Now, I'm a renter, so I'm not a property owner. You all put a moratorium on rent, but not on mortgages. And there were a lot of mom and pop property owners who winded up losing. One guy bought up 50 properties. Some of these in this, the guise of a nonprofit organization, because we all know how it takes to make those. It's not hard. And all you got to do is make a big salary. And they're still nonprofit. Again, affordable housing is your clerks downstairs, all your employees, all the little people. That's affordable housing, what they can afford. But most of the people who work here don't live here because they can't afford it. And it doesn't matter how long a process is, corporations of this size will take the time to make an extra few hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars for those places. They don't really care about the time. And again, why are you giving them the break but then going to another meeting and saying, oh, hey, small mom and pop, give me 20% of your income?
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McLean. If there's no more public comment, I'd like to make a motion for the request to authorize a tax increment exemption agreement with the City of Salem with 38 Norman Street be referred back to the City Council with a positive recommendation.
Counselor Merkel makes a motion that we refer the matter of a tax increment exemption agreement with 38 Norman Street, Q O Z B L O C, be recommended to the full council with a positive recommendation, seconded by Counselor Stott. Everybody in favor? Everybody opposed? I see four in favor, one against. The matter carries. Let's take another motion. Motion to adjourn from Counselor Stott, seconded by Counselor Merkel. We are adjourned. Thank you.